Jackie coming in the door.
I'm making a motion, I mean, opening up our town board meeting. I'm making a motion.
Jackie's coming in the door, what you say? What do you need minutes?
You're late everyone. My God, we just got caught shut up for ten minutes.
Oh no.
Hey! Sorry for being late.
It's gonna be down. You want any pen? I want Sherry or Mandy going to leave myself.
Yeah, where should I put my paper?
Where is some pens at?
Okay, I'll get some out that way now.
Danny made me some. Thank you. Jackie, how they talk to you right from now? We're gonna go Raleigh.
What is this thing that you're signing right here?
Oh, that's transfer say, Bobby.
Put my name on there, you don't have to sign the thing.
That's, you know, them reports you have to sign, or what Jamie does, the file reports on the Forest Street City.
So Sherry and Mandy has to be on all this here.
Yeah. But it has to be one, it has to be one has to be known as the certifier. And...
Yeah.
They can't be on the one to be, uh... The certifier can't be a signer.
Yeah, I got more down my DOT. I'm just getting it back in his head, I can't get everything in anyways.
It's gone with this Forest Street project.
Yeah, can you hear me Jack?
We've done it a long time ago, Steve just wasn't...
I got with the DOT down in the meeting, so...
I'm missing it back.
He's gonna solve it for the other hand.
How do you put Steve on?
I'm just getting back in his head.
Okay, thanks.
I don't like that.
Okay, oh, okay. Appreciate it.
Did you get him at the...
Head of mine, it's all over store again. This is the cheap guy. Mine on the page.
That's how we need.
Who signs in your certifying official title?
Bobby.
Oh, just one, one of them.
Okay, let me tell you what I said.
They need to sign up here to top the bed, sign checks, man.
Let me tell you what I said. This project, this has nothing to do with signing all the checks. This has to do with signing all that progress report.
This is not in...
Only. Does Bobby sign everything he says? Possibly.
Is there a camera? You recovered the order too?
Yeah. Uh, uh, I move that we accept the, I approve the managers.
I haven't seen them.
All right, Bobby.
Give us maybe do on that and Steve on that.
Okay.
Yeah. I think you gotta sign the bottom one too.
Yeah.
How about our business, you know, get that on there?
Yeah, I've got our business.
Put it right in the first?
Yeah, right to prove the managers.
But let me find out from her to make them sure.
Yeah, well, if I don't have to.
We give Mayor credit, get my wisdom.
Well, we went, we went back out there and the media wasn't around. But the wall was still wet and all.
Well, that's, I'm worried it's going somewhere.
Well, she's leaving mine.
She had approved work now.
I thought they were somewhere there.
Yeah, I think she got it fixed. I seen some boys little backhoe after beside her house. Maybe, maybe they got it fixed.
We got some tax notice.
We're gonna do them at first, but we're gonna recapitulate.
That's right, it's gonna buy you money.
And also, also too, and Mandy's gonna be fully tired to work on the budget next month. I mean, that's just no bad business, have to be daily.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Sniff.
All right, Saturdayville maintenance work with you.
Uh, he's, he's out there setting up everything for the fishing derby.
Okay.
And having to do a little bit of labor, a little ground and everything.
Was it all right with them?
Hmm?
To work on their land?
Oh yeah, because they got big dirt piles and everything. What it is, is just flash forward, there's a little house, a low spot, just getting a little dirt and filling that in.
Probably where they are.
Money bank.
Hey, for the little minutes, uh, do you have any old, old business to come before the board this time?
What's that name, that's signed, I think I made.
Uh, I think we really need to give one more month to make sure.
Ron Hurdin.
Yeah.
Okay. Just their checking, wait for it into.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh...
Is it down here, that one that discussed a HEACRE offer?
Number seven, would you be able to...
I read that it's been number six and, and six double seven.
But I don't know contract number.
We're gonna have to discuss that in open session.
No, it's contract, no.
Yeah, we can't. You can't discuss that.
Okay.
That's contract.
So it'll be under personnel then?
It is, but it's a different statute and I do not have that number. It's just contract statute, but I don't know what it is.
Put number seven on there, great. That's great today. Is it even open or...
Just as open as it gets. How's that? We could go out to court and have fun, do that on my part if you want.
All right, number two is Everett Brooks, stupid request. And Sherry, have you got that note for that late credit thing?
For...
Lord.
Yes. Mike, oh, Everett's wanting to go to...
What time is it?
Get his credit hours?
He...
For his license. Well, I say, where, where you ready to go? Sandy.
Oh, Sandy, play.
He knows.
Anybody wants to do that, needs to go.
Yeah.
Like to see upstairs, don't you?
Yeah, that's not good.
Okay.
And I'll tell you why, basically in the process that they wouldn't take it Tri-County, I believe, if it had the tradition stuff on it.
We're going access to the EMS up here for that webinar. Wait, come in on webinar that we could do. Ed Saturdayville, tell me anytime they want to do it, sit up there and just let them know ahead of time.
Tri-County's got one down on that building too.
Okay, so Everett's his pass. Next is, uh, board's Kegel water bill. I've got a note here, says I had three water breaks. I had a, had the water turned off as soon as it happened. It was at home, I was home each time. Two was behind the shower, the wall had to be cut out in the bath, out in the bathroom. Wall cut out in the utility room, then that didn't work, so we had to cut the outside of the house to get to the shower. Four days. I was without water trying to getting it fixed. I had to pay two hundred twenty-five dollars for work. The water is fixed, I never had, had a late credit loss cable.
How many of...
How much was her bill?
Her bill was five hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-four cents. And Sherry's got it calculated, if you give the credit, it would be down to fifty-two, sixty-five.
Well, how many, is this, all three breaks was in one certain one month?
It was on... Her high bill was ninety-eight, fifty-four. And that's the one that she won credit on.
Just the, the water bill?
Just the water bill. Ninety-eight, six, fifty-four, about it.
I make a motion to give her credit.
I say no. Take one.
And she's gonna...
I don't care.
Go ahead and make unanimous, buddy.
I'll make it unanimous.
He made it unanimous.
I'll write towards you little letters, okay?
Yeah, little B's.
Little B letters.
Oh.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda, I've, I've spoke, I had a thirty, twenty, thirty... And thirty-five minute, uh, conversation prior to lunch with, uh, Patrick Kirkland. And, uh, he has gotten with one of his sister in Atlanta. And they are for, I'll go to bring it up, that railroad grade. Uh, with one stipulation, and, uh, he had discussed it before on the phone about there, down that cartway, or vehicles getting down into his field. And I told him, I said, the, the town would work with about putting a gate up there to keep, you know, and he would have the key and the town would have the key, so we'd have to bushage it right away.
Does he not have a gate up there?
Up there on his own, probably, this year down here, coming in the backside down the creek.
They keep, they just back, they backing up and they're dumping trash.
Trash, junk.
On, on the Mill Creek side there?
On the Mill Creek side. Well, we've been coming out with...
Yeah, we'll have to protect that.
Yeah.
Put a gate on.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, uh, with that easement right there, that, that's a straight shot to the State Department.
Now the State's gonna have to come up with a money to do it. Was this, I mean, everybody up there is great now, haven't they? What, what did, you talked to Ed, said we talked to Scott and...
Ed, Ed's supposed to be calling Matt Lambert this week.
Bishop and Ma'am, I just right away acquisition, total project.
Well, Matt and Scott and Ed control five tracts.
Also talked with Freddie Harold in length of, uh, Monday. And, uh, he won't be out this way for at least a week or ten days. But he said this is keep up the good work and be assured that Kay Hagan is doing everything and calling in favors and everything to see if they can find something that would be feasible to go in and sell it.
She's got some rubber, had some...
There's an enrollment number to him, I, just an enrolled member to him, I think they've been bought.
That's what I heard. What will they do with it?
Say that's gonna run a furniture factory.
Oh, yeah.
Said that's what the chief is gonna do, run a furniture factory.
I heard a cash flow factory, I know that over there.
They have a ice company too, sold it or something. They've got the money to do if they want to, I'm telling you that.
But actually, I do know Ashley, I mean, near both. Uh, one of them's there today and the other one's there tomorrow.
I mean, if we do anything to help the sale of it, somebody will help me, don't they?
I know.
Somebody for you.
I don't care who it is, do you?
She'll look, I don't know what, we'll be up and...
Yeah.
And why don't you men have my hearing fatal, won't we?
Uh, Mike Warsack also said there Friday, that he'd be in contact with State, setting up a meeting possibly around twenty-eighth from now to thirtieth, uh, of this month, to get them, McGill, and, uh, us to sit down and, uh, have a talk around.
Well, let's go back over just a second, that Kirkland property, Steve, so our next step on that, we need to notify the State, everybody's verbally, say verbally agreed.
We've got a verbal agreement.
But they need to get to right away, written right away to these people. And, uh, recommend going to them with the local lawyer doing them, like on Mac and stuff, people will be more favorable to somebody. If they send some state lawyers naming out, people don't know, they, they won't trust whatever they send them to start with.
Right. And, uh, Mr. Kirkland asked if we should kindly send, uh...
Copy of everything?
That copy of the proposed by the road or proposed by the, the creek. And, uh, he would want, he would definitely want, this right here is what he would be interested in. DS plus the other one with just the property owners, that one right there.
And, uh, and Bobby will attest this right here, remember, we need McGill to the engineer it, we want it to work when we get through with it, so... Tell them those state engineers can check, but, but McGill needs to be the one to design it. We want it to, we have to flow the...
Action with our, what they've already done.
Cause if the State goes in and starts working on it...
Because they're working, I think, with Bonnie Mountain right now. But I think they have, don't they have to bid out Everett to contract now?
No, we, we, township or local can, you know, we can tell them we use, whoever.
Whoever we use.
But we go there. On each state project, each DOT project, we can do that. Except highways, we keep doing highways. Bringing some water to our line.
And I found out yesterday at meeting too, that, uh, come June first of next year, uh, the DOT will not be doing any type sidewalk work. And any of their own roads, whatever, that's gonna go, uh, they're in the process of, uh, integrating and moving all that into recreation and, and stuff. And so that won't be, uh, they will not have nothing else to do with sidewalk.
Or they gonna do third pair of conduits?
Uh, it's, it's gonna be turned over to recreation from what the God told me.
Well, I'll tell you what, since we're coming up and offering them a free hook after a sewer line... Uh, tell them we need some sidewalk work done before they change up.
Well, he did, they did say that if any, that if anything has already got a number, where it has been okay through the State, and it starts prior to June first of next year, the State will, will see that through. But thereafter, if it don't have the, the number that they've approved it, it's a no-go, it'll be, you'll have to go parts and wreck.
But is that the way, bike trails and stuff tend to...
That's, uh, health walks, greenways, uh, back paths and all. Uh, this is probably, should've been some old business, but I've got it new, cause, uh, time is really at its essence. And if we was wanting any staff t-shirts or anything, we need to go ahead and get them down, I've got two.
We can't afford to put seven dollars place for them, six and a half, six, six and a half, we can't afford that.
How is this for staff or like a, a Fourth of July?
We was gonna give some away too, at the time, you know, for the kids, but we can't afford, I mean, you have to order so many of them, we, we can't afford five hundred dollars for t-shirts.
We get stuck with the whole in life.
Our men's gonna have anyway, aren't they? Don't they have their vests and stuff? A ticket board?
Little name paper.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, our laminator really works, we, we picked a laminator up up there and the, uh, our, uh, cars each individual carries for drinking traffic for four years. We, we tried them out on that and it, and it sealed all four corners with that ripple thing.
I thought we were gonna call on them things, when I, I said how much it was, I knew we couldn't...
Uh, I've got ten, I've got ten packets for name badges, and Tris is gonna make us up a family, a little flyer with, or tree or whatever with Manscaped and County Robinville, and that way we'll get off state rates downstate.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you about, uh, when I begin.
Yeah, like what you now they have, you've got a better map, right?
Well, we should have had it.
Okay.
Well, they did a much...
I feel they did.
Uh, they wasn't much, I mean, they was lot, lot attended the, the CTP meeting yesterday, there was a lot more people I've seen down there than I had seen. And that got a lot more input into this and...
They shift them in again.
Well, no, this year we're locals.
Local people.
Locals and all.
There's good credit coming through, that wasn't...
Mm-hmm.
I meant to, but I have got back time.
Yeah, that was a good, that's a good turnout down there.
I had them message, you seen the message I put up there?
Good.
I built the AM road.
That's it.
We had them.
They've studied this to death, basically, they've studied this to death, trying to find something, but it's all on board land, just whatever DOT and, and all.
Forest Service.
Forest Service and, and Blue Ridge and all months. Okay, we'll move right along, uh, to...
What, you say one, when they start that alternative stuff, coming up with more alternative, all they're fixing are alternative shafts, they're not doing that road, that's all that is. I want that to go on the road, that's my opinion.
I think that'd be unanimous amongst this board.
We'll go ahead and...
That's a resolution.
That's right, that we are in favor of, of a new route.
Of a new route?
New route, well, not, not, not widened or...
The full lane all the way.
I mean, whoever the powers may be, they ain't, nobody can show you any money for a road, or nobody will take, take a lead on a road that I could find, um, bigger government. But if we settle for a widening, they're gonna be tickled to death if they're gonna do anything.
Because they just don't spend like two, seven, seven hundred dollars.
Well, you local officials, uh, you know, you, you accepted this, you accepted a widening, it's, it's just a little place to lay blind.
What?
We already had to pass the resolution and send it to them.
We passed, we passed many resolutions on it and wasted so much paper and so many man hours, we could've dug that road with a frickin' pick by now. We, we've got, well, well, great, we, we followed great too long, I'm telling you, today I washed my hands of them. When they, when, when he come in against the road, I mean, you know, people, each their own, somebody wants the road, somebody don't want the road. But a county that's folded, and everybody we can talk to, the reason they can't set up here is because they can't get out and they can't get in. I can't support anybody and I won't support anybody, that, that overlooked that road, I don't care who it is, I mean, that's just my feeling on it.
Is that a motion?
I make, I make a motion, we wash our hands of, of them and, uh, you know, I, I'm not saying great's a bad thing, don't get me wrong, but when they wanna monitor water for, uh, for...
That's a...
How dirty and how... Well, it is, it is to you, well, you know, we get monitored to death, we, 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 our discharge down there is, if, if you wanna monitor something, you monitor, monitor for, for phosphorus, you monitor for, for some kind of chemical, not turbidity. It's all, it'll all fall back to steep slope, one of these days they're gonna get to where you can't put a driveway on a mountainside around here. And this is just the way in, this is just the way to get your foot in the door to get started. I will not support that no more. I might be wrong, I don't care if I'm making mad, don't care, I'm not here to, uh, I'm not here to please anybody. But, uh, from what I seen yesterday, and, and the comments that were made on some of that stuff...
And what was wrote in.
And what was wrote in, I will never support them again.
Because they're, the, the, down there to end, down there where the stage was, they had a, a parentheses, and, and it basically was saying, if you've got a dog, or a goat, or a cow, or a, 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 basically a farm, or if, in order to get through your driveway, there's a, a little branch that...
Intermediate stream.
Don't ever gets over six inches deep with a four inch rein, if you have to cross that, that, they can legally stop you from that. Because you might be stirring up some dirt that was gonna make the creek dingy. Well, God almighty himself, whenever he sends in big rains, it makes it dirty. The Mississippi River, uh, it, it stays muddy ninety-nine point nine times a day.
I'm not saying, you know, don't, don't try to prevent runoff in streams, I'm not saying that at all. But we've got organizations now with Clean Water Management Act, Fish and Wildlife, State of North Carolina's got people that regulate water. I don't know if there's anybody on that great board that know how to pull a water sample, I, I don't know, if they've got a professional, I don't know. I'm not saying don't, don't clean the lake, if that's my priority is keeping it clean. But I'm, I'm through wasting time, paper, travel, planning for something you know that ain't gonna have bicycle connectivity, and, and I'm all for it. But just like Jackie said, build a road and it will come.
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
But what's the use of building all this if you got a road to go with, build a road and it will come.
I agree with you, say it.
Is that a motion?
I said it, uh...
They opt in, we're soft out. Uh, we're just, we're just sort of opting out of the great organization and...
We're not against it.
Not at all.
But we're, 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 we support some things, but not all.
Oh, I agree, I agree hundred percent, you know, they've done great stuff, great stuff.
But when they part, when they go against the road, they go against us.
We got more people in town worried about that, that's right, they've got more people in town worried about the bicycle trail coming through the back yard right now than them.
Mm-hmm.
It ain't gonna happen on my clock.
Had too many people come to us, they don't want it.
I don't know what's happening here.
Okay, all right, uh, so far, I think we got about forty-eight things, Tris is gone, we got another check from, uh, Ian, uh, two checks, matter of fact, yesterday, a four hundred dollar one and a two hundred dollar one.
Now, now the two hundred...
Two hundred was for, yeah, but the two hundred was for strictly fishing derby, and she's gone now to get some adult pride.
Where was that from, two hundred?
Two hundred dollars, uh, that was from...
Steelwell.
Steelwell and Ellen G., LJ.
Yeah.
Wow, good.
We'll get y'all cash, we'll get the...
Yeah.
Mrs. Wong always supports us, they always...
Wow, them kids enjoy them.
Hey, we got a great day on Saturday, if we don't do anything right through the year, on Saturday, we have a great day.
Jimmy gonna be there, aren't you?
Yes ma'am. Bring your players.
And be sure and bring your kids, Lisa.
She going too. Well, and then we feed Stanley then.
Tuesday.
Tuesday we feed Stanley. They will have a...
And we've got enough help up there, uh, Thomas will go up and help serve the tray, build the trays.
Yeah, what it is, we're doing a, a employee appreciation dinner along with the county and the school.
Town and school, and I think some town, town people have...
They've not actually saved definitely ever, but we can encourage.
But they're, they're talking, they was talking yesterday about the town itself plus some individuals themselves making contributions for this kind of thing. And they, and, and, and it's a really, it's really fascinating to see the school teachers, each local government now come forth and want to do, the churches has been immaculate. Given us, uh, given us, uh, use of kitchens, making baked beans and stuff for it and all, that would've been a cause to the municipalities. Uh, remind everybody, we got travel and tourism tomorrow at one thirty.
Well, I thought it's eleven o'clock.
Eleven, I, I bet, I bet, let's see, that's eleven, eleven o'clock.
I, I afford...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Town's...
Town's traveling tourism. Also on the twenty-fifth at the, at morning clock, uh, Duke Power and Rivers to lights, they've got a something, a new thing coming in reference to cheaper rates on some stuff. And also we'll have her, I'm gonna get Lisa... And also we'll have her, I'm gonna get Lisa, uh, Letterman. In a, in vehicle and I'm gonna take her to both water tanks and show her the. Some danger trees and see if she can get the bucket trick over here, get those, get it before they fall on them. And then there's two there that will tear down a main transmission line that's.
Oh, yeah.
Right on the side of the bank.
I think something, I, I put it on there that we need to look into. Our recycling problem. I'm, I'm all for recycling, but from, from what money I can see that we're putting in, we're, we're losing. About three hundred a week. I mean, we, you know, it's taken, it's taken from the, but it's costing us about three hundred some dollars a week to. To, uh, if we sold three times as much as what we're getting, we're still going in a hole, we need to look at it somehow to make it cost effective.
Well, let's put, let's put a little more advertising.
We need to recycle, don't get me, we need to recycle.
We got to.
Yeah, well, we don't have to, if, if it's costing, you don't have to. I mean, you don't have to, but, but we need to make an effort to.
Yeah, I think we should carry that one a bit longer right now.
We need to find a way of trying to grow our program. Uh, you know, we're, we're driving one place for one little box, which we got to anyway.
It's, uh.
But it's taking two men to recycle.
There, there's no way that we can have, we, we don't have no site, no water that we can park that trailer in and then bring two.
I tell you, you get in liability building those ramps and people trying to get up on them and falling and stuff.
Let falling on them.
I don't know, you know, unless you manned it, we got one out there manned, the county's got one manned. We need to do our part somehow on recycling, but, you know, we can't, we can't start losing a lot of money.
I'll tell you, my problem with it is, I, I sometimes I forget that it's Wednesday mornings.
Yeah, that's, I, I think a lot of people have done that too. And then they're just throwing it away, cause, cause you'll get bags of trash that'll follow that, recycling. It's got most of recyclables in it. Real light, I think they're just forgetting the day.
Well, what do we take, the big truck around?
No, we've got a small truck that we pull with that trailer, but it takes two men.
Average truck.
You have to.
Pulls the trailer.
It's so big in the streets or somewhere, you can't just jump out and get it.
On the trash thing, that's what I'm gonna do. Chad and I were looking down like. Maybe possibly looking into somehow regulating some kind of trash can or just putting it in a. Trash can because they were. They put down where they was having problems, they was sitting it out and garbage was left out and the dogs was getting in it or something.
That's one thing they didn't just leave it. If we regulate a can, the town has to buy.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's what I told them.
Yeah, we have to purchase a can.
Didn't we give away, then what the county give us to give away the first time?
That was recycling.
Recycling.
Well, the, the, the county came and got our hundred fifty boxes away.
What we had to lay out. And that was through the, that was through the, uh, that was through the grant.
Four acre, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the town.
Well, I mean, why'd they come after, wouldn't they give my weight?
They, well, they run out.
They ran out.
We're thinking we got too many, we got five hundred too many, we.
But we need some now, don't we, we gotta, does that get people moved in and out, we probably need to give a few more out?
We have to buy the ones we give out now. We have to, we have to purchase after the grant, we have to buy them. Have to buy the little green.
Well, I think we oughta try to get some back from them, cause they probably still got some.
We probably could, huh?
Let's ask them for some back, Steve, tell them we need about.
I've done, done hit.
I think we let the school have them then.
Have you?
They don't have any.
They had them?
I think we let the school have those for the price of a hundred fifty, at least what they win. But I, I think.
They left them, ask them back for them.
I think what happened was we got theirs too, we had, we had several hundred too many, nobody told us, so we just give them out to.
We just pick one of the county, got ours too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
But we, we want, let's, let's put. Who's gonna have, didn't we, was that the county too?
Well, yeah. We would run one on recycling, yeah, see if we can get it to pick up.
It's on the door too.
And encourage it, the town often encourages gre- recycling, do your part, well, we need to get with the school. And, and they, they need to, if them kids go out down there.
Uh, Wednesday.
Excited about recycling, there'll be some recycling.
Uh, Ty, he's in first grade, he's got Amanda, need recycling over at Stickel.
Yeah. That's right.
They're learning school, don't they?
Yeah.
Man, maybe if they had somehow a little contest, somebody keeping up with it or something, the kids.
Let's do something, let's mention, let's add a fishing, and we get them out there, we can have hundred fifty, two hundred out there fishing. Saturday, let's, let's hit this recycling with.
We got a bunch of brochures to hand out. Yeah, we need to get those handed out.
Tell Theresa, be sure and, and give us something.
They started up, you know, the first few weeks was really, I thought, hey, we're doing good, then they just got you dropping off, dropping off, dropping off.
With that, you know, sign we got that bought, you know, sign that tells what all you can recycle and everything, we need that up at our fishing derby.
Did they ever bring it back, man?
They got it.
They optioned, they got it for parade. Now, they might let Teresa have it back.
She might, it might be back. I don't know, I don't have a tendency to remember.
Get a recycling sign back, no more ever chat.
And McGill banner.
Well, let's, let's go ahead and get us a letter, let's get us a letter. Sent out to our elected officials over our district on the road. From the town. And we sent them out and sent them out. Let's preach a little more, cause somebody can just tell us where the money is at, if they see it, if they show it to us.
On that silver line going.
On the road.
On the road.
Well, we just need to go ahead and, we've had, we've got a reservation, we can just go ahead and.
If it's red, bro, we need to send it.
Let's just take the other one and put today's date on it, and we pass it today and send them to town.
You hit me with the ladder.
I, I think what we gotta do is.
And, and, and let's put us a.
I think what we gotta do, Jack, is, is, is tell them that we are for a new alignment. New, new, not.
New pavement, new four lane road.
And not, not a, not a patch garden, but a new road.
Well, we, and we want, definitely want the money spent here.
It's alternative one, ain't it?
They, they change it every time they come in. It's a different alternative, I, I was so confused yesterday, I don't know if that road come through here in Oxford, Tennessee. Oh, you had bicycle tracks and pig trails.
New lane, four lane road and right away, flash right away.
Right away acquisition, we're going by an acquisition.
Right away acquisition.
This stuff will start hitting home with something, some tragedy like Stanley closing. You don't get, you don't, gets, uh, worked up over, you just set back and, 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 and it's everybody, you know, it, it gets, I thought, I'm gonna put my chances in it. You get prone to something, it never happens, it never happens. I got to fly over Graham County one time here a few, few years back. Son, you can look at Murphy, it's just as busy as it can be, and you can look back at Stickel. It is busy as it, you can say them four lane, you just like about that far up there an hour, I could draw the line and. They stuff happening on the other side though, and then you look down at Graham County. I seen Johnny Long circle twice, is all I seen. It's a shame.
I know.
But these elected fisher, they'd love, they, you know, they, they put a, they put a burden on us to prove why we need a road. Well, let's put a burden on them to prove why we don't need a road, you know, tell us why we don't.
Sounds good.
That's what they've been pushing all along, make us prove why we need a road. Why God, we put you in office, you prove why we don't need a road.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's.
I've got one more to add to our agenda. And, uh. I seen firsthand. Uh, out here on, uh, eight, uh, Eight Oil Circle and Cody Street. Trailer carriage run out and stopped me, and he said he was the one that approached the board years ago about planting them evergreens out there there. But they have ground where they're blocking. Whenever you turn left in, to go into Stanley Park, he said he seen nearly five or six to have on places. He won't know if we can come by or what.
We just think.
And just get that bow saw and, and just cut.
First, first three years, I don't know, thing, it don't seem like that, I hope. But, you know, we wanted it thickened up to make that shield.
Yeah, right.
Uh, for that buffer, and now they're, they're thick enough to trim it.
Okay.
We need to trim his trees that's going up, that road he left.
Yeah, well, too, uh, the garbage truck, Chad said that it's.
You can't get that.
That right there.
But we need to work on that, it'll be, it'll be weathered, trimmed in here a day or two too.
Yeah. Hopefully get one.
But they're full, it made a good screen, it's green and.
Okay, gotta take care of that. Uh, is there any further new business anybody needs? To go over prior to us going into, uh, personnel in close session. Reference one forty-three, three eighteen, eight six.
And whatever that one is.
I don't know the contract. It's got, it's gotta be in that three eighteen, but I don't know.
Well, this is the contract to close out our sewer plant with the paper, that's what it is, ain't it?
Yeah.
You know, he'll tell anybody.
If, uh, if no further business, I might, uh, I, I will entertain a motion to go into per- uh, close session. For personnel and. Uh, contract on top.
You need to take everything on that?
Yeah, I need, I have to make a motion.
You need to make a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Take.